All right. Good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, October ninth at nine AM. We'll start our work session. Does anybody have any public comment in the room? Does anybody have any public comment on the TV? Or on the world wide web? Okay. Maddie? Come up here or talk from back there. We got an open seat right next to Will.
Awesome. Are you Will?
I'm Will, yeah. I'm nice most of the time.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Maddie Cunningham from Heart of Oregon Corps. I'm the summer program manager. Thanks for having me this morning. I'm here to present on our accomplishments this summer through Central Oregon Youth Conservation Corps in our Cook County crews. And our big thank you for the funding that y'all decided to give us and help support the wonderful work that we did this summer. So, um, yeah.
Are these your kids from this summer?
Yeah, all these pictures. Thank you for asking. All these pictures are specifically Primeville Cook County crews. So we've got a little photo shoot to do. Just a little program overview. We were able to do eight weeks of conservation projects all throughout the Ochico's coordinated through the US Forest Service. We started on June twenty-fourth and ran until August fifteenth. In that time period, we had a college day where we went out to COCC. We had a career day out here at Wildcat Campground, where all the forest service members came out and taught our youth about different careers that they could explore in natural resources. We had an awards day at the very end where we celebrated and we had a big costume contest. And then we had Fourth of July off. And I think it's not listed there. We also did a resume workshop day. These are all paid days. So one of those days we went and learned how to do resumes. We were able to hire three Heart of Oregon Primeville crews. We had forty-seven applicants, which was a lot of youth who applied. We were only able to do three crews unfortunately, but we hired sixteen youth, which was great. Fifteen on those Primeville crews and one we actually got on a Madras crew because we had an open spot. Program-wide, we had sixteen crews. We served seventy-two youths. The youth made fifteen dollars an hour and then worked Monday through Thursday, four-nine, seven AM, four-thirty. They had an opportunity to work two-hundred-and-seventy-nine hours total when they started here at La Monta compound. Yeah, also something was... La Monta compound? It's near the... What is that tavern called? It's a forest service compound for...
Oh, I know where it is.
Yeah. That tavern. The water hole? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's right over there.
I think I asked this last time.
Yeah. I can't remember the answer last time either. Something really exciting about this year is we were able to hire three local Cook County crew leaders. I love hiring local crew leaders. We will do this year. And one of them was really excited. It was actually a CYCC alumni. She had done three years as a youth on her cruise here in Primeville, took a year off, and then came back as a crew leader and is dedicated and wants to continue on in this path working in YCC. She was awesome. Yeah, that's overview of what we did. So talking a little bit about youth accomplishments, like I said, we hired seventy-two youth total, but sixteen Cook County youths, all ages sixteen to eighteen. Cook County youths worked a total of three thousand six hundred and eighty-nine point five hours throughout the season. And this is just crew, uh, youth wages. So this isn't crew leader wages. They earned fifty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. So it's a substantial amount of money to earn throughout the summer season, went directly into the youth's pockets for their hard work that they did.
They make that per person or total?
Not per person. That's total overall, imagine.
You hire adults?
No, that's overall for all sixteen youth. Um, we, like I said, we did a career day, college day, resume day, and awards days are all paid days. At the end of the season, I administer a survey to see kind of what the youth experiences was throughout the summer. Eighty-six said they felt more connected to their public lands. Eighty-one said they feel better about their future. Ninety feel better percent, uh, feel feel better prepared to enter the workforce, which is a big one for us. Eighty-five had a positive experience. Eighty percent they had gained, felt they had gained new skills that they can use in the future. Those are pretty good numbers. We always like to keep higher and higher, uh, but that eighty percent feeling better to take part in the workforce and that also that connection to public lands is really important to us. And I think that overall, we really accomplished those goals. The youth this year were really awesome. I want to highlight a youth just off the top of my head from Cook County who did a really amazing job this year. Her name was Cynthia. Uh, she, her family comes from a long lineage of working with YCC. She is one of three sisters who have all done the maximum turns that they can through YCC and have come back and become crew leaders. Uh, this was her second year. She can do one more year. She's a senior in high school now. Her family experienced a tragic loss this summer. Her brother was killed on Highway one-twenty-six in a car crash in the middle of her season. So, uh, it was devastating for her family. And Heart of Oregon, we definitely were like, oh, please take off all the time that you need. You don't have to come back for the rest of the summer. We understand. She took a week off and came back ready to go and had to continue for the rest of the summer, showing a hundred percent attendance. Showing up early and completely dedicating herself to the work of her crew. Uh, when I asked her about how she was doing, she said she was having a hard time, but she was dedicated. Said that YCC gave her a sense of family, a sense of meaning, and a sense of purpose that helped her push through that grief. And it's something that's always been really important to her family, including her brother. And so she was just one Cook County youth that just really shined this season out of a bunch of, all of them really did great this year. But just wanted to point out Cynthia. There's a picture of her later.
I want to commend you on the resume working. You know, that's a big thing. And that's really good that you go that extra step and do that because that's a scary thing and it's good that you do it. And now that they've done it, they're going to feel more relaxed whether they, whatever work they do or wherever they go. I just want to commend you.
Yeah.
Really wonderful.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We have, we have like a part of the day we talk about normal application, normal resumes. I would say normal. But the other half of the day we talk about, um, USA jobs, federal hiring. Because USA jobs and federal hiring, like they wanted to go to Forest Service is its own unique beast. Um, you have to have the keywords and like different things that you put in there. And so we have a professional come in and teach them.
Good for you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. You can click the next slide. Uh, these are our national, Ochico National Forest achievements. Again, this is just on the Ochico's. This is all the work done by the, uh, Primeville youth, Cook County youth, um, and then Madras youth too worked on all this. Uh, we did eight fuels days, so we completed a lot of fuels work out in the Maurees. Uh, we did not forty-nine silviculture days. So we did a lot of silviculture, planted a lot of trees, three hundred and sixty-eight acres of newly planted trees, including shade parts, which are like the shade things that you put over baby trees so they can actually grow. Uh, we have thirty-three recreation days. We did a lot of maintenance work on local campgrounds. Uh, Dry Feet Campground, Walt Lake Campground, Divide Campground, Forest Camp Campground, and Elkhorn Campgrounds. Uh, we did some trails work. So we did a lot of trail work out in Mill Creek Wilderness, as well as the lookout mountain trail system. We did twenty-six acres of noxious weed treatments, twenty-six miles of roadwork, which was a decent amount of roads work out in our forest, uh, Forest Service roads. We did fire prevention at Jefferson and Cook County fairs. So our YCC crews were out here at Cook County Fair. Talking to the public and educating them on fire safety and fire-wise decisions. We have no trace policies. We did thirty-one days of aquatic work. That included making beaver dam analogs. The kids got to get in there and make beaver dams. Eighteen days of, uh, range work, installing dustlers, which are big water troughs for, uh, local cattle. And people were doing range work with their stock. Seventy, uh, seven days of wildlife work and four days of OHB trail work. We did a lot.
A lot.
Yeah, we do a lot with our sixteen. These are just sixteen youths, um, but they get out there and they crush it. In particular, our Primeville crews have just like a really strong work ethic. We get a lot done for those for National Forests. So it's really cool to see.
Well, I really like how it's so, uh, versatile.
Yeah.
Just all the, you're kind of hitting all the high points of the forest.
I'm really grateful to the Forest Service. Uh, we have really one solid lead. His name is David Hamrick, but he has a great relationship with all of the specialists, right? Like all of these people, range, botany, fire prevention. They really all get engaged with the youth and come out and show up in a really strong way. So I'm very grateful to them. Next slide. Yeah, these are just some pictures. These are again, all Cook County youths. Did all sorts of stuff. Some flash piling, some...
What is the youngest age? Because the guy right there on the left looks young. What's the youngest age versus the...
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yep.
Oh, you said that. Okay, sorry. I, I, I missed that quiz.
It comes down to like our labor, labor laws. Up there on the top, that's our college day. Smokey the bear made an appearance, even though it was extremely hot. I'm sure Smokey was sweating. Um, but he came on. All the youth were like super excited and messing around with Smokey and like they got pride on the uniform and walk around. Um, that's a beaver dam analog over here on the left. I think we're at Williams Prairie. Um, we're doing a lot of planting. Right there is Cynthia, the youth who has, yeah, multiple year alumni and went through some hard stuff and just showed up in such a wonderful way. Just making a fence right there. I think that's it for my slides, actually. Oh, never mind. Right. In the future, going to twenty-twenty-five, we're going to continue to do three Heart, Heart of Oregon crew Primevilles, possibly try to do four if we can, considering funding. Uh, like I said, there is a big interest and a big push for youth here. They love doing this work. It's good for them. They enjoy it and would love working out in the Ochico's. So we're going to, a minimum three, but we're going to try to shoot for four. Again, we'll have fifteen youth minimum, twenty youth, we get four crews, age sixteen to eighteen. And then again, three local crew leaders or four local crew leaders. That's actually incorrect for waging raises. Are raising wages next year to fifteen fifty to try to keep up with the job market, keep up with the inflation. So that means they'll be able to earn, uh, over four thousand dollars individually, which is a lot of money for sixteen-year-olds. So we're going to continue on our Habitat Wildlife Projects. We're going to be definitely doing a lot of fuels work, especially because we had a pretty heavy fire season this season, uh, right outside on the Ochico's close to Primeville. So we always try to get back out there, um, and reventitate and do some more, uh, fuels reduction. And then continue to earn, learn, uh, money, a sense of independence, some soft and technical skills. And continue investing in our public lands. So, uh, I really want to thank Cook County for your funding. It was essential to making the crew successful. Uh, your support is huge in advancing the youth and empowering the youth in different, um, activities that we do, different nonprofits, and including Heart of Oregon and the Youth Conservation Corps. So thank you for your interest. Thank you for your support. Um, like I said, we will continue to work in this, uh, community. We're going to continue to try to hire more youth conservation crews. So, um, continued support and funding is always a need for us. But I still just want to thank for what you did for twenty-twenty-four season. If there are any questions that you might have about the program or about Heart of Oregon Corps.
Thank you for your enthusiasm and your wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, totally agree. Great job.
Appreciate it. Thank you guys. Thanks for having me.
Yes.
Well, that's it for me.
Yeah.
I have a quick question. It's obvious. I'm on OFRC committee and I'm always looking for someone to come and do a presentation. Do you do a presentation? And that's Ochico Reforces. What is it? Yeah. Would you ever think about doing something like that?
Most definitely. I would love to. Um, I wonder, sometimes I wonder because the Heart of Oregon has multiple programs. I wonder if we already have some sort of relationship we might?
I don't know.
Yeah. I'd look into that though, because it sounds like a great partnership, uh, whether we can do work with them or if there's funding or, you know, whatever there. I would love to.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Maddie. How long have you been with them? And are you out of the Redmond?
I'm out of, I'm all over the place. I'm out of Bend and then I'm also kind of out of Sisters. I live in Sisters. I have been with Heart of Oregon for two and a half years now. I've lived in central Oregon for over ten years. Um, I was working for the Forest Service. Before that, I was in the military. Um, so I have a pretty strong connection to like AmeriCorps and some service projects. So I'm really passionate about this. Really love Heart of Oregon. We do have a Heart, a Primeville office though, if y'all aren't familiar with it. Um, we have year-round crews that operate in Primeville, specifically on the Ochico's. Yeah.
Perfect. You don't have a card, do you?
Um, I should, if I was...
Okay, that's okay.
Prepared.
I, I never take my card, so I'm not going to blame you.
Do you have a QR, QR reader or anything?
For Heart of Oregon? I think I, yeah, actually I have some, I do have some flyers for YCC that I could pass out and you can scan the QR code and it'll take us, take you to our website.
That would be perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you for your enthusiasm.
Yeah, thank you.
You make me want to be sixteen again.
I know, it's so fun. I always get out there when I can. I got like one or two days where I actually get to go in the field. I'm like, bye. Yeah, I just want to join you guys. I don't want to quit my job.
Be outside, get paid for it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get those flyers.
All right, Derek. All right. Hey, thanks, everybody. I'm Derek Hopfauer, now we're each an engagement administrator for CYC, which is Central Oregon, in their government council. And here today to talk about, um, STIF, which is the statewide transportation improvement fund. It's where the counties in Central Oregon get their funds for casketed these transit, as well as some other eligible entities to provide public transportation services. So, as many of you know, we do a, uh, Primeville dial ride. Um, that's grown about five percent since last year. Um, so it's a very great service. All of those services are currently free. They've been free since the pandemic. So that's available for any member of the public to utilize, uh, for like medical trips, shopping, and that's within the city limits. Plus of Route twenty-six that goes from Primeville to Redmond. Um, that's up about four percent since last year. So we're seeing some growth in ridership. We're just about at our pre-pandemic ridership levels, which is really get a lot of transit agencies across the state and the country are still way below on their, on their ridership compared to how they were doing before COVID. Um, so we have a process coming up. This is the, the twenty-five, twenty-seven biennial funding. So every three years, um, our advisory committee will meet to prioritize, review and prioritize projects that are submitted to the county. County is the qualified entity. They receive the funds from ODOT and then those funds are distributed to mostly casketed these transit because we are the public transportation service provider, but there's also other entities like commute options, um, receives money to do a van pool program. That van pool program, um, did really well last year as providing some services for course, um, transportation services for Forest Service employees, as well as some folks coming out to Versada. So we're seeing a lot of the county folks using that to come into Redmond, come into Bend, and also vice versa. Um, but the advisory committee will meet on October twenty-third, one to three. Typically be good in this ring, but we're going to actually meet over the city of the Primevilles Department. And they're going to be reviewing the projects. The projects are due to the county on Monday. Um, I believe Brad Haynes will be our SIF coordinator. So those will come to Brad. And then we'll come back with a project list for the county to approve probably in November, uh, before Thanksgiving. So what I wanted to do today was to talk about our advisory committee members. Um, a lot of these folks have been on the committee. This is part of my memo. They've been on it since twenty-nineteen, since we really started this process. Um, a few have, have kind of come off and come on. And we do have a new transportation director. I'm sure you guys probably know Bob Townsend, former ODOT region border area manager. Um, so Andrea Rose, no longer with the organization, as well as Rachel Zachman. She was an alternate on the committee. So we'd really like to get Bob fully appointed. And we wanted to make sure we did this ahead of our, of our meeting to make sure that we were, you know, meeting all the ODOT criteria, who's been doing the public transportation service provider represented. Uh, George McCarr, he's been on it. He was on the former STF committee, which was a special transportation fund, representing people with disabilities, um, and older adults. Um, due to his health condition, he's, he's not, he hasn't been participating in the meeting. So we'd like to, uh, remove him from the list. And then we also have Dennis Marsden. He works in Primeville Senior Center. Alan Dandy, Vanda Brothers. Uh, Kia Wilson, she works, she's a case manager. Um, over at DHS, um, here in Cook County. And then you have Curly, she works for commute options. Josh Smith, Primeville City, City of Primeville Planning Department. Um, so we'd like to keep those folks on the committee and just, you know, make sure that we're reviewing their terms as well that are expiring at the end of this year. So you'll see Dennis had a twenty-twenty-four expiration date, and Curly. Um, so we'd ask, we're asking for the, for the, for the, um, the commissioners to, uh, reappoint these terms as well as these new members. So that's kind of the main ask. And then, you know, we can, we can talk about the project list if you guys, or the funding amounts, if you guys have any interest in, in that. So.
But are, is, is that something, the approval of the people isn't something we have to do today? You're fine with that going on to a incentive agenda?
Uh, yeah, yeah, sure. That's fine. Yeah. Yeah. I just wanted to do it before the end of the year so we can have all that in place.
But in November, you're going to come back with their recommendations for projects. So probably...
We could do it then.
Is, is that the best time or?
Yeah, we could do it then. You could do it either way.
Whatever.
Yeah, you know, we have, because we have Alan Dandy on there and they are providing transportation service. We're covered with the public transportation service provider division for our meeting next, um, in a couple of weeks. So either way, it's fine. I think just by the, before the end of the year, we take care of it. It'll be great.
Or should we put him on discussion? I hate to make you come back, but should be discussion and then we discuss the projects and that in a more of public forum?
That would be in the November meeting, which I haven't set up. Yeah, so we can, we can just take care of all of it then. I just wanted to give you guys an update of, of the solicitation process and what's happening with the, with the project list.
Is right now a good time to chat about the veterans?
Yeah.
And the dollars you're getting for the veterans and how they're really concerned about strings attached and...
Yeah.
What's, what's the best way we can make that as low impact on them as possible? Because it's a really good project that they're doing. But, uh, they, they could use the money, but they, they don't really want it if there's going to be a ton of reporting or, or any of those things. So it, and maybe it's better to talk off of them.
Yeah, no, we could.
Kind of get to the bottom of it.
We could bring it up because the applications are due on Monday. So they would need to submit their own application and I, I can support them with that. I'm actually going to meet with them right at this meeting.
Okay.
Um, we've been meeting with them on, uh, this last year to kind of get them ready for this process. I think the challenge is with the funds coming to the county, vehicle ownership is, you know, kind of tied to some of those ODOT requirements. But I did, uh, raise this issue to ODOT and they got an email back to me. Basically, we can, we can do it. Um, I think the, the Cook County would need to use kind of the, the county-state procurement process. For getting a vehicle, they're looking at about fifty thousand dollars for like a, a Ford X, you know, Explorer, some kind of SUV that has all-wheel drive. Um, and basically the, the, some of the reporting requirements, like all of the projects, would fall on the county that CYC can support that in terms of, you know, for instance, there's, um, you know, quarterly reporting on this, which is done already with the projects. There's the title to include ODOT Public Transportation Division as a first security and interest holder. Um, but I think all of those things can be worked around. And I think basically if the county used the funds to buy it and then they, you guys just kind of donated it to Vanda Brothers, then all they need to report on, on their end is the vehicle maintenance plan, which we know Alan does all the load changes, regulate, he documents it. We've gone through all that preventative maintenance log, which he does already, and then the ride log with mileage and already tracking their individuals that they transfer. So it's a pretty minimal effort on their end for reporting and CYC can certainly support them in that effort. And we have been doing so to kind of prep them for this process. On the county's end, CYC can also, you know, provide assistance and ODOT can provide that assistance as well. So I don't think it's a, it's a huge thing and I'm expecting them to put in an application for fifty thousand dollars and also support them on that. And then CET would just reduce their application. You know, there's, there's a lot of carryover funds. There's about five hundred thousand in carryover funds from the last biennial that didn't get used to pulling those funds. I think it's a great project. It supports our services, veterans at Cook County. You know, CET does provide a free veteran services, but the, the Vanda Brothers folks, they like using their volunteer drivers and that's perfectly fine. And that saves CET money by not having to hire a taxi cab to come out here and take those rides. So we're actually providing service that complements our service. So we're very supportive of it.
I just don't remember, we did this ten years ago, nine years ago?
Yeah.
Maybe things, maybe things have changed, but I don't remember a lot of these requirements.
That was prior to STIF. I'm not really sure how you guys did it before that, because I think STIF started in twenty-nineteen. And that was eight years ago. I think it was right before that.
It was definitely right.
Yeah. So there's probably a little bit of a different process, but you know, I think...
I think it was fifteen.
Yeah.
Is it was, it was before you and Jerry got there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the current vehicle that they're using, which is pretty much ending against life cycle. And without another vehicle, they don't have any way to get veterans. So their medical appointments.
Yeah.
And so, you know, ODOT pretty much gave us like, hey, it's all eligible. We just got to work through some of these, some of these, you know, hoops to make sure that we're following the right process.
Birth dates of the...
No.
Of the drivers anymore. That, that seems like that, that was what they were most concerned about.
I think if the county's owning it and just handing it off to Vanda Brothers, there's not that requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't. I mean, that's...
And I know Alan does a great job keeping notes and...
Yes. Yeah, so we're ready to, to move on now. And that's the important thing, you know, we wanted to bring up today is to make sure that you guys are comfortable moving forward.
A hundred percent. I mean, that, that, it was, I think the money we originally got was for a two-year program and now we turned it into a ten, ten-year, eleven-year program?
Yeah. I mean, it's a good public investment for the county and for the veterans here in Cook County. So, yeah. We'll definitely support them on our application and, you know, and then during the meeting, uh, where the advisory committee needs, you know, Alan's on the committee as well. And so we can talk about that project, we'll rank them. And then the stiff plan is the one that we really need to kind of line everything out. And that, that will be the one that we'll bring back in November for you guys to approve. It'll have all the projects on it. And we can take care of the advisory committee, uh, roster if that's not into improve those. Just do it all in one go.
What times you meet?
Uh, is one to three on the twenty-third. So.
I met with the Vanda Brothers. Is that the end of the day?
Um, excuse me?
Oh, I thought you said you were meeting with them.
I'm going to meet with them at ten o'clock today, just to check in with, they're having a meeting over at the, I think the Athletic Club over there on Third Street. So, yeah, I'm just going to pop in and give them the application and, and let them know, you know, that we're here to support them on that. So, yeah.
Cool. Well, thanks for doing that.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Yeah, so now actually today, I just want to give you guys an update of what's going on. And Sarah, I'll look to you to schedule a meeting and like kind of early November to get everything formally approved and then we'll be ready to go. You guys have any questions?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Well, I got to shoot advisory committee meeting. I got to get to them. We got to meet Alan and Charlie. Is there Charlie Pop? Is there a treasure or two? So we'll get them going on the application and I appreciate you guys' support on this.
Katie Huang? Paige, Katie Huang?
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Um, I have our twelfth amendment to our LPA, Local Public Health Authority contract with, um, OHA. And this one gets us our full amount for, um, our overdose prevention and response grant funding. So that was expected. We're also receiving an additional ten thousand dollars for immunization work. I'd originally only budgeted for ten thousand dollars for, uh, PE forty-three and immunization work. So we've received, uh, far more than that. Um, now we're in more of the sixty to seventy thousand dollar range anticipated for this fiscal year. So, uh, that's the only, um, difference in this contract amendment and it's going in the right direction. It is receiving more money rather than less.
Anything else?
No, I think that is all for this one.
You have any questions?
No.
Yeah. Thanks, Katie.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm here today, uh, to ask for permission to apply for a large grant. The name of the grant program is, uh, through the EPA is called Environmental and Climate Justice Community Change Grants Program. Two point eight billion dollars. Katie, have you got any, or Sarah, have you got any slides?
Um, I have the packet at least. I was just trying to see.
That's okay. Two point eight billion dollars, uh, was given. That's okay. Two point eight billion dollars uh was given to this grant program. And two hundred million dollars was given for technical assistance. The minimum grant amount is ten million dollars. The maximum grant amount is twenty million dollars. These are large grants. There is no match required. Uh, so we thought we would at least try for one. And one of the things that they're interested in funding is a resiliency hub. Uh, that was part of a proposed project that we are working on, uh, Jennifer Canyon. So uh there's the information about it, two point eight billion for financial assistance and two hundred million for technical assistance. Um, we can go ahead and go to the next page. Thanks, Sarah. Next slide.
It's the website.
Yeah, it's a website.
Oh, well, never mind that. Uh, so these grants are available for what they call disadvantaged communities. And so you look up their map and you look at Jennifer Canyon, it is a solid orange, which means that it qualifies for this grant. Um, this is a little backwards. Usually we would uh bring before this work session our project that we've got planned for going on up there. The reason this, we're asking to apply for the grant um first is because it has an expiration date of November twenty-first. Uh, we have a line on a couple of grant writers who would be willing to help write this grant. This is actually the notice of funding opportunity. And while I'm really interested in applying, I don't think I have time to go through this the way a professional uh grant writer would do that. Um, so what we're asking for today is permission to hire the grant writer to write the grant. Uh, in a nutshell, the project that we've got planned, uh which will come before this group at a later date is for hiking, biking, horseback riding trails, and ADA trail and one building that would house a resilience hub, a community gathering space and community rooms and what I'm calling a library of things, which would um be a collection of library materials that would complement those um self-sufficient type efforts that uh we would like to promote out in the community, whether it's um harvest-right freeze dryers or, you know, cameras or anything.
Even that game camera, right?
Yeah, anything that people would be interested.
What's in a resiliency center? What is, what, what is, I guess, what is a resiliency center?
Well, that's a great question. Thank you. Um, and it can be whatever we want it to make, but the notion of this is if there was an emergency, and goodness knows there's a lot of them right now, whether it's fire, snow, you know, hopefully not flooding. Um, it's a place where people could go and have services. There would be a backup source of power there, heating, cooling, clean air, that sort of thing. But it can be another level. It can basically be whatever this community up there decides it wants it to be. It can be a place for education. It can be a place uh with a commercial kitchen where uh meals can be prepared. But it could also be a place where our community members could check out that space. Maybe they want to start their own business um baking something, or we could have educational classes on how to brew beer, whatever it is that people learn how to do up there. Um, it could be a place where, say, they have a bounty of tomatoes in their garden harvest. They could go and preserve that in a space that um is available to them. Not everybody up Jennifer Canyon has a great source of power or the, I don't know, the wherewithal to get those sorts of self-sufficient activities completed. It seems to be an area, I live up there, but it seems to be an area where there's a lot of interest in being self-sufficient. And this would complement those desires of that community up there. It could also be a place where uh there's a group that's formed that prepares for emergency situations. I'm aware of a place like that in Manzanita, where all of the residents got together. They actually went door to door. They made sure everybody in that community was prepared in case of a disaster. You know, it could be at that level as well. Um, so to encourage the self-sufficiency of individuals and their families, but also as a community. And I think it's needed up there because we have one place that's a community gathering place, which is the Jennifer Canyon Baptist Church. But we don't have any other identifying uh place where that says, this is our place. This is where this community gathers. And I'm a part of that community. And I think there's a need for that. You saw, you saw the efforts for the farmer's market up there at Richie's this summer. And uh people are looking for those opportunities to form the bonds of friendship and just get together. So, does that help?
Very good, Sarah.
You found your map.
Okay, that line coming down from the top is Jennifer Canyon Road. You can see that it's all in orange. And then you can go ahead to the next one, Sarah. Sorry, this slide.
I'm wondering, has Palina disadvantaged too? Has that got orange on it?
They have maps. And uh we can look it up. I didn't look them up.
Well, I just, just out of curiosity, I thought maybe you had a county-wide map.
Uh, I can look it up. So right here, we try to pause for a second. Uh, the, it's called a Track One Grant. Um, projects need to be completed in three years. There needs to be two lead applicants. One's a nonprofit, which I can use my little road district for one of them. The other one needs to be another nonprofit or a government entity. And um for this grant, we need the wherewithal to be able to administer it. I got together with James at facilities and we looked over the numbers for different uh parts of this grant because we wanted to make sure there was enough money there to get the job done, because we don't have an extra million just like flying around for, you know, finishing up something. So we actually increased um the amount that we would request to the upper limit, which was over nineteen million dollars. Uh, to make sure that that happens. Uh, but right down there under Track One applicants, number five, I think on that list uh was for resilience hub, um energy efficient buildings. And um, and then go ahead and go to the next slide. So it needs to be at least one of those. And on the next slide, at least one of these. And actually, part of what was proposed is that we um install a community water system up there. So a lot of people have to go all the way out to LaMonta, and that's a burden for them, uh both for finances and just the logistics. I'm not saying this would be a free water, that they would pay for it, just like uh they do out at that place in LaMonta. But this was one of the things where we thought it would make a huge difference to the people that live out there. Also, the resilience center would have uh an air scrubber in it and some other things, so. That kind of the gist of it. Uh, in a nutshell, this can be changed before we submit the grant, but this is what I'm proposing. Yeah, there you have it. Hiking, biking, horseback riding trails, community water system, one large building to be used as a resiliency hub, community gathering hall and library of things. Um, and that would be near and around Hilltop. So we have yet to hear um from the Oregon Department of State Lands, although I've looked. Uh, I can look and see if any comments have been made on our proposed project, and so far, there's been no comments. That comment period ends on the twenty-third. So I'm thinking that's looking good right now. And then this is a map. Uh, the green area is the current gravel storage area. The white line off to the right is Hilltop, and so it's on both sides of Hilltop. And uh, so this grant application uh you know, is a long shot, but it's better than no shot. And so I think it would be a stretch for the library to go ahead and apply for it, but it would be a growing stretch and it would allow us to be prepared. Um, and we've already found some grant writers that we didn't know about before, so that's.
Did you go to Palina?
Well, I, I think it's on this side of three eighty is what I'm thinking. Like, they don't have a lot of landmarks there.
I can look it up.
It just, it was a curiosity question. I just figured you had a county map and then.
It's a EPA Climate Justice Disadvantaged Communities map, but you can look it up. So um we're asking for permission to go ahead and apply for the grant uh contingent upon having a place to put this project. If uh we're looking to move that forward with that.
Yeah, no, thanks.
Doc has a question.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
Yeah. I also set up for a fire zone in case of fire people could need.
I'm gonna go talk to um the fire search and rescue people after this, because you need two lead applicants. But your application is stronger if you have five or six partners. And so that made sense to me, that I would go talk to them about that.
Um, I'm just out of curiosity, yeah, I mean, part of Oregon here around youth crews that do trail building, how is that restoration? They have all the tools that could go out and help build any sort of trails. And I think we would be highly interested in being a partner um on your application. When is it?
I will get your contact information before I leave. Thank you.
Again, this is, I work with the summer programs, so it would be not my programs that I manage. I'm speaking for our year-round programs. But I'm sure we're always looking for partners and they're funding the two projects here uh in Pineville, and we'd be definitely highly interested.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. When is the application due by?
November twenty-first.
November twenty-first, okay.
We, I did sign up for the technical assistance on the last day that I could. And so we do have somebody that could review our application before it's submitted.
Good.
And um, you know, if we need help in any particular areas on there, I did ask for help with the community water system because I wasn't sure who to ask about that. They have um topical experts on these things that we can tap into their advice.
Cook County Foundation might be another good one to call.
Might have some resources to help with any grant writing too. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? And I don't mean to be a stickler, but the reason we have the, I, it was all really good comments. The reason we have the public comment at the beginning and the end is, is, no. You're sitting here too, but no, it's totally fine. It just, I know, because we have other things that we don't want people to weigh in on and we want to just get through business. Not that we don't want them to weigh in on, but we want to be able to streamline our, our meetings. And so uh I just think it's really important to remember that, that there's a reason we have the public comment at the beginning and the end. Just wanted to make that quick comment. Okay, well, great job, Sarah, and I'm excited to have the ideas.
It's better than no chance.
Yes, yes.
Give it a try.
Hey, if you never try, the answer will always be no.
That's right.
So how do we, you know, you gotta give her a go.
Yeah, all right.
Excellent.
Eric?
I'd like to see if I can get your blessings to those, our fiscal office those two days. Um, and I hope it's that all three uh staff members will be able to get them the um Oregon Association of County Councils uh Conference. I call the size of AOC, um will have the ability to have remote work. Um, this will be something new, so we won't physically re-present those two days, but um we have been experimenting with remote work. It seems to be working pretty well, so I'd like to get your blessing.
Good bless.
I don't know, Eric.
Oh, two to one. So it goes ahead, but it's a little nice.
I don't know if I can let you two lead the county. I'm worried.
They're coming too, right?
I am. That's it. That's why I'm worried. Okay, I'm fine. I just had to put some little comment.
All right, Sarah?
So, we are hitting that time of the year where we have a lot more of um vacancies coming up in our boards and committees. So we have been throughout the process trickling in advertising where we can. We did two rounds um recently of advertising. There are a couple of committees that I'm still waiting to hear back from, so we will still have more probably in the November meeting to be appointed. But for, for right now, we do have three um possible reappointments for the Vetral Control Committee. And those are in your packet. Um, we have a Tom Green, Jeff Spinkowski and Ken Fallgreen. They were all on the committee previously. They've been on the committee for a long time and they are just re-upping or asking to be re-upped and reappointed. So if you are okay with these three for that committee, I will have an order created and we can put a non-consent agenda for the November or October sixteenth, I'm sorry, um, meeting.
Yeah, sure as me.
Suzie?
I'm totally fine, yes. They didn't have much on their applications.
A lot of times people don't.
But I'm totally fine.
All right, this is the uh, the excitement of the day.
The dogs.
So Commissioners, uh, this was presented. This was presented about two weeks ago for consideration, and at the time, the thought was maybe use some additional contemplation was needed. I, I haven't heard uh
No, you've done the other question.
Any of these options since then. Um, the issue here is opportunity cost. And this has the idea of the opportunity cost, meaning that any time ever spent on doing one thing, it's time and effort that you don't have available for doing other things. Um, I wanted to pose this question to the four commissioners if the opportunity cost is something that the county wants to invest in. If so, so be it. Um, if not, then I wanted to begin the discussion about what different options might be, and the purpose of the discussion is not to necessarily say, yes, this is what we're doing, because virtually all these options would require some sort of additional work, amending the code, engaging outside attorney under option four, some additional work that would come back to you. Um, so this would be a start of a process, the conclusion of it. Um, as you just had in your memo, um, last year, our office has been having a great many of these. Um, and they do take, uh, they aggregate up into a significant amount of time. And each of the steps very doable. It's the aggregation that is, I think, a significant problem. And then unfortunately two sort of bottlenecks to getting resolutions. The first is that the maximum fine is only a thousand dollars, so um, not a lot of dollar value there. The other bottleneck is that the courts are reluctant to impose even that maximum fine, even for people who are brought back again and again and again. Uh, the present fine is two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um, so the question I think to you is, you know, is this something that you want our office to continue to do? The status quo requires some sacrifice, um, and particularly it means the opportunity cost. There will be less time to do other things, which you might decide probably more important. So with that, I guess the question is, um, do you have any questions for me? Have you had time to look over the different options? Do you have strong feelings? One or the other?
Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead. I, I thought we were waiting on Mitch to get back with his thoughts on the different options and what, what worked best with the Sheriff's Department.
I haven't heard anything.
What does the Sheriff's Department think?
But I, I think, yeah. Well, I briefly looked at the, at the options. I don't remember what all of them are. Um, and uh Mitch is currently on vacation, so um him and I have not had a conversation about this, so. Um, that's kind of where I'm at right now. I, uh, I mean, I think that I understand what Eric's saying, and I think that I, and I do understand um his concerns and some of those things and um, we could work through that, but I also have some other opinions um regarding that as well, that, you know, it is uh procedural things that our guys um don't know, so. Sounds like maybe a bump it for, when, when does he get back? I don't know. Uh, two weeks, so he should, I think he's back next work session, I think. So maybe, do you think you guys could have a chance to look it over and get it with Eric and come back with some comments? And the next work session, we could have a robust conversation about.
Be October thirtieth, because we have five weeks this month, so we do not have one on the twenty-third. So, maybe October thirty.
So October thirty, I think we'll be back by then. Okay. That work for you, Eric?
Yeah. First, so I'd like to try to figure some way that County Council doesn't have to do this, um, because I think that's that'll be economically feasible for the county to do it that way. But I think there's a lot of things that need to be considered in this. And I'm not just rushing to it. I would think we would want maybe put a committee together, kind of toss this around from all sides. Because we're asking also, like, what are the penalties gonna be? What are, what are we gonna cite for? I mean, it's a big, big meal here, and I think we need to have some thought process to it. It's just not a dog going, oh, orange. It's, it goes from that all the way to dog biting people and trespassing and killing animals. And if we can rate those in some way, or, you know, severity and how we deal with them and things. I think it would make a little sense. Yeah, one of the options is, you know, option six is to sort of create a chart that talks about that type of escalating severity and sort of a go-no-go decision based on that. My idea in that chart would be something akin to what the jail uses for deciding when inmates are released from custody. You know, you look at the severity of the charge. Offenders, you could look at, you know, all a variety of different externalities. And then say, okay, if you're above this line, the answer is yes. If you're below that line, the answer is no. Same idea here would be, you know, take the trial or don't take the trial. Yeah, and it's just a matter of getting to where everybody's comfortable with it. It's hard to also manage different warnings and keeping in the track of that. And it's, so if, you know, I, I've read them all and they all have great things. And I think it's just kind of taking a little bit of each one of them and coming out with something that looks along for us a little bit towards the county end. And at any rate, you know, it wouldn't be expensive for the county, whether it's a hearing officer or, you know, how, how are we proceeding with it? And where we're building safety marks and finding this. And I don't know how, how, other ways should we look at maybe funding it? And, um, but I just think that this needs a little time to kind of push it in. I don't think there's any road. I know you don't want to do it anymore, and I don't blame you. But you'll have a little more time to figure out something that we to be clear, I am perfectly willing to continue to prosecute these. One of these, the issues here is again, the opportunity cost. Because I'm already working weekends. I work nine out of every ten weekends. I know a lot of other departments do the same thing, so I don't want to say I'm special, so it's no flake in that. But the time spent on this, this time can't, can't be spent on other things. And sometimes it's not very pleasant to say, yeah, sorry, I can't get that contract back to you. Because.
No, I, we all agree with that.
Totally, totally want your time is not best.
We want to notice something forward. How that works for everyone.
How would you get, okay, you, you're talking about a committee. So how would we go about? I mean, obviously the sheriff's part of that committee. And then who else would you think you would want on there?
Well, I, you know, I think it would be probably good to have the DA on it. I think the Sheriff's Department and, you know, a lot of us. And I, you know, I, and I think also it's a value to maybe look around, see what everybody else has done.
That's what I would like to, and maybe you've already done that, Eric. But that's something I'm very interested in seeing is what Burns does and what Horny County and Lake County and Klamath County, they must have other counties that run into the same issues, right?
So we can, um.
List serve it?
Yeah, see if we can get an update on that and come up sort of a chart. And we'll sort of focus on our area counties, not necessarily metro ones, but smaller ones.
So you're gonna do that, Eric?
Yeah.
Okay.
Take more of your time. Solution. Well, I'll tell you, if somebody has a silver bullet and we discover it, it should be money well spent, so.
And I mean, I would be willing to meet with Kerry and the sheriff and we could figure something out. If we could get that, if that's what you want to do, or if you want to, I mean.
No, I, I don't care who does it. I'm just suggesting.
I can do that.
Just don't, just don't come up with a dog licensing fee to pay for it. Because they did that in the past and it was not very popular.
No, but we could just go and wait till Mitch comes back and Mitch, Kerry and I can get together. And I'll have Brianna schedule some.
And just to be clear, I'm not necessarily advocating option three. Option three is somebody else prosecutes it. And my concern there is the same, is that it doesn't reduce the amount of work, just says someone else does it, then they have it. So I'm not advocating that as the solution.
Would you like to be part of the meeting that we first have?
I think that'd be helpful.
Okay, then I'll, I'll have Brianna schedule that with the knowledge that Mitch is gone. So it'll go, and then we'll see how we go from there. Then we'll come back. Does that sound good?
Sounds good. Thanks, Eric.
You'll tell Mitch.
Okay. Uh, interim manager report.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you again very much.
I have a couple of quick, kind of feel-good updates for the, for the board. What's that?
We need feel.
Yeah, we do. As you, you guys are aware, we have a leave donation program here at the county. I just want to highlight how effective that program has been. It shows the generosity of our colleagues here at the county and how supportive they are of their colleagues in a time of need. That program results in donated time being, the maximum amount of donated time being made normally within a couple of days and oftentimes within a few hours. So I just want to highlight kind of the generosity of our, of our staff here at Eckerd County. And I want to thank Kathy and Amy for implementing that program and Eric for, for highlighting this kind of success story here at the county. I also wanted to congratulate the Finance Department. They just got noticed that they were awarded the distinguished budget award from the Government Finance Offices Officers Association, GFPA. That's a big deal. It takes a lot of work to meet the standards that they have set, that GFPA has set out to, to receive that award. So I wanted to congratulate the Finance Office and would encourage you guys to congratulate them when you, when you see them next. But that's a big deal and it's awesome that, that we've been able to get that the last couple of years.
Are they on there? No, I don't see, but congratulations.
Yeah, Christina, sir. Great job, Christina.
Christina, yeah, yeah.
Thank you all. I wish Jamie would be here. Unfortunately, she's home with a sick kiddo. But I will pass your congratulations on to her.
Thank you, Christina, very much.
Great.
Now are we having the feel bad report? I was raising, I'm raising myself, okay. No feel bad. Good, good, good report. Good report, love.
Um, so commissioner updates, there's a letter of support for the economic plan for Kelsey Lucas. And then there's also the Mandy Puckett letter of support that I think both of those we've agreed to do. So is that gonna, are those signatures we need for today? Or is that to the next?
I believe Kelsey's is due today.
Ed Co is due, so I will, yeah, I will make a motion that we go ahead and sign both the letter of support for Economic Development Plan and the letter of support for the Educational Campus Hub today after, at the conclusion of the meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I just have one more thing to add. It came to my attention that the Queens Coordination Tryouts, they were charged for the outdoor arena. And I just, they're such important partners for us. I think that's a really good opportunity to use the, um, our, what's, what's the red term? Benevolency fund? I can't remember.
No, it's community fund. They didn't like my benevolence term. So it's.
Predator Community Fund. I think that's a really good, uh, I think that would be a really good use. They, they're such important partners to us. And so, uh, and it's, I don't know, such an important thing for having somebody out there be our ambassador across the state, talking about Creek County and all, all the things we do here. I think everybody here at this table likes rodeo. So I, I think it was, I think it was thirteen hundred dollars. So I think that seems like a very reasonable fee to take care of, to, to keep them engaged and part of the, the union.
Yeah.
And I, I so move for the motion that we go ahead and do that out of the community fund.
Second, any discussion?
No. I, I said no, but I mean, I.
That's not a day.
Okay, I blew it.
Nice to meet you all. So any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, got that settled.
Okay, and now we are going to move on to the, oh, any comment before we move on to the executive session?
Do you have?
All right, the Creek County Board of Commissioners will now meet the executive session under ORS one nine two six zero two H. Consulting with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely filed under ORS one nine two six six zero two F to consider information records that are exempt by law from public inspections under ORS one nine two six six zero two E for the purpose of conducting deliberations with persons standing where the government body negotiate real property transactions. Representatives and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All members of the audience are asked in the room, representatives of the news mayors specifically directed not reporting deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session previously announced. A decision may be made in the executive session. In the executive session, we will open, return to open session, welcome the audience back in the room. Do you need to do the second recording? Uh, Creek County Border Hemisphere will now lead the executive session under ORS one nine two six six zero two five. Consulting with council concerning the rights and duties of a public body to earn litigation or litigation. Consider information or public records exempt from public inspection, ORS one nine two six six zero two E for the purpose of conducting deliberations with persons standing where the government body negotiate real property transactions. Representatives and designated staff shall be allowed to the executive session. All members of the audience are asked in the room, representatives of the news mayors specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session previously announced. A decision may be made in the executive session. In the end of the executive session, we turn to open session, welcome the audience back in the room. Hey, do you have any motions?
So for the topic under two F, two foxtrot, I don't think there's a motion. For the third topic under two H, based on the discussion, I'd recommend a motion to direct staff to correspond with the counterparty. That's discussed in the executive session.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any else? On my, uh, the real property one, there's no motion for that today, no action of today. On the two H, recommend first a motion for staff to proceed as directed in executive session.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, John.
Uh, for the second one, I guess, a, a motion to approve and sign the letter to D E Q after county council presents the final draft. Commissioners outside of court.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, anything else? Any adjournments?